We're meeting. We're meeting, Norman.
Well, we've pledged allegiance. Oh, at this time, we'll proceed to see if the agenda provided, if there's notice from the board.
I pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the law, and to the right of the nation, and to the people who live here. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, roll call. Looks like the only one missing is Jasmine.
(baby crying)
So.
(baby crying)
We'll go to superintendent academic award.
Yeah, we're back. So welcome back, everyone, to a new school year. Just like that, September flew by, and now we're in October. And so we have our first superintendent academic award winners for the school year, and we'll start with elementary. I do want to just preface these awards by saying this is a great time to just highlight what the whole reason we're here for. And so I'm thankful for, obviously, teachers, all staff members, all employees who work with students each day, parents, community, our school board, you know. It's very rewarding and grateful to work with people who are committed to students. And, you know, just being student-centered and having the opportunity to think about the reason that we are here, all the dynamic things that happen in a school district, in a school day. It's super important for us to really continue to understand that we're here to be for students. And everything that we do is student-centered. So with that, I will, I'll have the building principals introduce the student of the month or the person that works in their building who will be introducing the student of the month. And we'll start with Broadway Elementary School.
Our dedicated second grade teacher, Mr. Taylor, is actually not feeling well. And we're hopeful that he will be feeling better, so he can come back to work tomorrow. But he wishes that he could be here. But I am very excited to honor Joey Roderick. Come on up, Joey.
Members of the board, colleagues, friends, and Mr. Lawson. This is from your teacher, buddy. It is my pleasure to choose Joey Roderick to receive the superintendent award from Broadway for the month of September 2025. Joey is an amazing child, and I feel fortunate to have him in my class. I'd like to thank Joey's parents, Josh and Tabitha Roderick. I think he has some family members here too, and other supporting people in his life. So thank you for all being here for Joey. Thank you, Tabitha and Josh, for giving us all the opportunity to work with such a wonderful child. Broadway staff have supported and encouraged Joey through his growth from kindergarten to second grade. Joey's path to second grade has not been without challenges. In school, there is a lot of pressure on students to excel socially as well as academically. As educators, we understand how difficult it can be for our youngest students to adjust to these rigorous expectations. Despite these challenges, Joey continues to work and grow. Joey's Broadway family is extremely proud of the growth this young man has made. In class, we spend a lot of time discussing how to be positive and hardworking and working hard. Sorry, let me start over. In my class, we spend a lot of time discussing how being positive and working hard can help you be successful in life. Joey demonstrates these qualities every day. He does this through his actions and his words. Joey shows empathy, understanding, and courage when interacting with both students and staff at Broadway. He exhibits our school expectations of being safe, respectful, responsible, and kind. Joey is a child with many outstanding qualities, and I look forward to following his success through school and beyond. Joey's Broadway team looks forward to watching his continued hard work, kindness, and growth in the years to come. Keep up the great work, Joey. We are proud of you.
Yeah, I forgot that we also have, each of the students that win an award, and I get to choose, they, they're just slap wrists. Super cute with little animals up. Okay.
(laughing) (inaudible) Stand right here by the Broadway team. There you go.
Looking Glass Elementary. Mrs. Ledbetter.
Good evening, everybody. I am excited to introduce Looking Glass's fourth and fifth grade teacher, Ms. Galvez and Ms. Jordy. At Looking Glass, when we were talking about our superintendent awards, they said, oh, we know, we know, we want to write it together jointly. So they are excited to co-announce our academic award winner. All right, we would like to invite Micah Stevens.
Well, there are a great number of amazing fifth grade students at Looking Glass. Micah Stevens is our nomination for the October Superintendent Award. Micah is the daughter of Michelle and Michael. Micah was chosen for this award because of her hard work, character, and determination of many of the positive character traits taught at Looking Glass Elementary School. Being a fifth grade teacher at Looking Glass, I have the unique privilege of first meeting my students when they enter kindergarten. Micah and I happened to start at Looking Glass the same year. Over the years, Micah has become an amazing volleyball player and has blossomed into an excellent leader. She is currently the only fifth grader on the volleyball team, still right? (laughing) Playing with older girls, and she holds her own very well, proving she deserves to be on the court. She is also what I call a quiet leader. She does not necessarily lead with her words, but by her actions, a quiet example. As fifth graders, we spend the year being the leaders of the school, and I cannot think of a better leader or better recipient of this award. What impresses us the most about Micah is her stamina and work ethic. She is an exceptional student who always tries her best. She brings a bright outlook and kindness into our classroom every day. She shows perseverance in whatever she does, even when it is difficult. She is an empathetic friend to everyone in our classroom and others as well. I would like to thank Micah's family for nurturing such a well-rounded and grounded daughter that would be going out into our schools, community, and world to do great and wonderful things. We cannot be prouder to have Micah in our classrooms and receiving this award. We know that she will accomplish anything she puts her mind to. And thank you, Micah, for working so hard at whatever task is put before you and always having a positive attitude while you are doing it.
That's been out weeks.
Let's invite Sandy Reno up here. Reno, our superintendent academic award winner this year, and Fulton High School. Come on up. Before I, Sandy, I did want to say something nice about Fulton, but he also and he was the winner of one of our prizes at Open House. So he is a winner. (laughing) And he's kind of great for people. I'm going to meet the flyer both on behalf of myself and also Kelly Burley. We are team teaching at McGovern this year, and so I teach ELA to Fulton, and then Kelly teaches him during math. So this is from both of them. I think he's really was doing volleyball tonight and wasn't able to be here. Although she would definitely be here. All right. Fulton is the son of Tasha and Victor Wilson. Fulton demonstrates perseverance, curiosity, and a genuine love of learning. He approaches challenges with a positive attitude and continues to push himself even when the work feels difficult. His determination and broad mindset have been an inspiration to both his classmates and his teachers. Beyond his academic strength, Fulton stands out for his kindness and respect towards others. He encourages his peers, celebrates their successes, and is always willing to lay the hands. Fulton embodies what it means to be a McGovern cheetah: caring, serious, and unstoppable. I am confident that Fulton's resilience, compassion, and dedication will continue to serve his love and inspire those around him. It is an honor to teach him and an honor to recommend him for this award. Congratulations, Fulton.
And now, Sinal.
Sinal.
Student board. All right.
Yep. Good job. Good evening, everyone. My name is Sinal Pedersen, and I'm here with the DHS report. Homecoming was a success. Our football team won in overtime versus Sutherland. The homecoming dance put on by ASV Leadership was a lot of fun. Our theme was Neon Night and Food with Kids by DHS Corning. In sports, volleyball continues to do great. They were eight and two in September and are currently second in the Far West League. Girl soccer is having their best season in years with a current record of six wins, one loss, and two ties. Our metal shop is busy making projects, including helping the culinary casters done schooling in their classroom and mounting a sign that the wood shop made for the old cast coffee shop. It's fun to see all the CTE classes working on projects together. We have some really talented students. Upcoming events at DHS include Trump for a tree on Thursday, October 30th, in the DHS parking lot hosted by the Booster Club. All are welcome to attend or participate. If you or anyone you know would like to participate, please contact Jennifer O'Toole. November 6th, ASV Leadership and the Red Cross are hosting a blood drive in the gym at the high school. Donation spots are still available. If you would like to donate, please visit the Red Cross's website or contact KPO Tool, and we will schedule a spot for you. Walk-ins are always welcome in bulk. That's all I got for this month. Thank you, and go for it.
Right now, we're going to have a brief intermission for those of you who don't want to stay for the full meeting. Maybe two. Okay. Yeah. Yeah. Everything's backwards. Excuse me. The green is.
(inaudible) Rusty later. Thank you.
Nice turn on. Wow. Oh, wow. Why did you tell him?
My dad, he could have believed it, and then he tried.
Yeah. Yeah. He didn't shoot that. Anyway, watch my hand. Here we go. Here we go. My dad is. Thank you. All welcome back. It is a nice day. All right.
We want into the superintendent's report.
Yeah, well, I want to start with the enrollment report. It does show that we're down 12 students from last month. So we'll continue to monitor that. It's, there has been declining enrollment. I've been looking a little bit more into it, even in Douglas County. So just slightly, it's nothing to be super concerned about. We'll keep our eye on it. Kim and I have been plugging numbers in and, you know, trying to ensure that we are allocated appropriately. So I did, it's not on there, but I did, there was a couple of copies in the back, too. This one that says state budget report. So I, I have that for you guys. If you have any questions in regards to that, I'll just read that Governor Tina Kotek, DTK, that's what I'm close spending. So we spoke about this last month. I told you that I would give you an update each month. She's referring to it in the third bullet, sharpening our pencils. Slowing spending, rethinking operations, delaying non-critical investments. So that's where we're at, kind of going back even to the budget message that I shared in July. That's where we're living right now, and we will continue to do so. But that's a purer resource if you guys want to read through that, and if you have any questions, either now or in the future, just let me know. The next, the next steps, really that last slide, it's just, they will, the state's been really responsive in regards to all the things that are coming down the pipe, and they'll keep us updated.
That's all I had. Okay. So move on to director's report, items of discussion. Recommended for SBA policy update reading.
Yeah, I submitted that big pile to you guys last month, and oh, I'm sorry, this is the first reading, first reading. This was just, one had come back through, let me just look at what that is. There's updated graduation requirements, that advisory committee to the board, that, that's pretty straightforward. There's just a lot of red line. It's actually just a new policy. The red line's gone. But then there is also the budget committee, version two. Education records for students with disabilities. Oh, they're not border, I'm sorry. The only two that we have were, the other one was the graduation requirements. So most of that big pile that you have, it'll be the second reading from last month. Yeah. Yeah, the present part. Yeah, and I worked with Mr. Anderson in regards to graduation requirements. There was nothing, nothing to to support or update.
Do you have a question?
I have a question on the personal electronic device one dash three.
Like the type of.
Yeah, it's actually, the question really is on two dash two, where it says the appeal to the superintendent within 10 days of issuing a document. It's not there. It's above that. But the school administration will consult with the school nurse appropriate. School administration decisions will be issued and communicated to the parent or guardian within 10 days. On the cover of the, on the other page, it says 12 days.
We just spoke about, there's two 12s.
So. One 12 and one 10. On page one dash three, it says 12 days. On page two dash two, it says 10 days. And I think they're using the same thing.
Where is that policy in regards to the whole packet?
No.
(laughing)
To be a bit finer.
What was, what was it? It was two dashes.
One dash three and two dash two. It's the J F three B of electronic.
So on the first page of written exemption provided to a student, and this request received, the AR, which is just that exception. The school administration will respond to such a request within 12 school days.
Uh huh.
Yeah.
And then on the second page, two dash two, it says the appeal to the superintendent. Communication to the parent or guardian within 10 days of proceeding. And I just thought they should both say 12 days.
And where.
I've been looking at apples and oranges, and I don't know. School administration will consult this plan. School administration decisions will be communicated to the parent or guardian. I hear it goes within 10 days, and over here, what I'm reading, it says 12 days.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
Yeah. I thought.
School administration will respond to such a request within 12 school days of the exception. And then it said school administration will, the school nurse appropriate, school administration decisions will be issued within 12. Yeah, 12 school days, and you see.
So it should be 12.
Yeah. Yeah, 12 and 12. Thank you for that. Yeah, 12 and 12. And then that.
I think it's correct. I don't want.
But the 10, the 10 can stay the same, the last 10.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
The 12 got changed in the, in the actual personal electronic device policy, but didn't get changed to match the AR. Yeah, the Division 22 standards report. This is, we just have to have this in front of you guys. Mr. Welker, is there anything that you would, since you're there, you can provide more information?
I could answer any questions. Basically, a report that we, that we are obligated to do to the state every year, saying that we are following all of the things listed in Division 22, which is actually, there's 59 items, of which 57 are currently required, ranges everything from math standards to pesticide use to the purity of our water.
Nice to be compliant on all those.
Yes, it was a good opportunity for Mr. Welton, I'd sit down and just, and to, what's the correct word? Ascertain our, our level of compliance in other, ask ourselves other areas we could do a little bit better in. But we certainly didn't want to, to even mark ourselves non-compliant in anything. It's an opportunity to improve. There's specific questions on any of those, I'd have to direct you to the website where all of that stuff is posted.
Yeah, Division 22 always gets everyone pretty excited. Having discussions about compliance and all the things in version, not to be confused with the 59 items, is that what you said, Dave?
It's called Division 22, that's the number of the O A N.
All right, you want to talk about the Douglas Recreation Storage Unit?
Yeah, that is one thing I wanted to talk to you guys about. So Doug Rec, you know, historically, they, I've been speaking with Doug Rec and working with Doug Rec. It would be nice if they could store some of their athletic equipment in a more central location. I've talked to Mr. Holback down at the middle school, over, over by the track. There's those track sheds that are already there. I, I don't know if that's the best place for it, but I wanted to at least broach the subject. From the information that I've heard, historically, we've never really offered, you know, the community organization, or specifically Doug Rec, that opportunity to store. So I did some research in regards to, you know, if we could make that happen. And I just figured that I would put it on you guys' plate. I'm not letting you do anything that they're saying now that, you know, folks top up on Sutherland or allowing people to use the school district, they're able to store their, their football pattern, shoulder patterns, all the things, whatever it may be.
Yeah, this would be volleyball, basketball, football. It's quite a bit of stuff, but it would have to be in a, in a location where they can get it at any time. Because we're storing it right now, and it seems like I'm down there, we kind of, sport comes around, we go over there. We end, then we even get stuff for people. So it would have to be in a place where they could get to it. At about any time, you want to.
Can you store things for something else now? You mean relocate something?
Well, they would actually, we would store, they would provide, Doug and Rec would provide, from my understanding, they would provide their own like pond or store play that we would put on our property. And then, and then they can store, you know, obviously, how, whatever locking mechanism they did, or whatever system it was. But it would just be on our, it would be on district property. And I'm, and I'm just threw that out there. I don't know, I could talk with the admin team, with the boards, with your guys' consent. I can, we can work with an admin team. We can come up with maybe a location or an idea or a proposal. And then we can put it in front of you guys to vote.
We're not, that was like bus farm. You know, there would be behind the fence or anything, but they could still get to it.
Yeah, oh, done, yeah. Yeah.
You work with the, Jamie and Holden, Jerry.
Yeah, yeah, I could, I could, you know, we could, I could, I could work with the Doug Rec board and find out where, what would be, you know, if they have recommendations. And then I can draft up a little proposal. I mean, yeah, we would, so we would do like, you know, an intergovernmental agreement, just to make sure we're compliant.
Because there'd only be probably a couple of people that would get in, I would imagine.
Yeah.
Do you need to push out the board to do so, to work on it?
I mean, I would, if people are making requests for me to work on things like in regards to that, then it'd be nice if, yeah, if you just approved of it. And if you guys are okay with that. And then I can work with Doug and Rad again. We can all work together to see if we can come up with a proposal, make sure we draw the lines across our Ts.
How big of a thought is this?
I wouldn't take any more trouble to be. It's not that much, but here we got these, big enough good shells in, some for the helmets and that.
That's right.
Yeah.
Yeah. I know. It'd be nice for them to get a home spot where they can start working on, including storage.
Or.
My back room.
You're right. Oh, this is.
Yeah, I could put something else in there.
Yeah. Hey. Hope that you got this.
Yeah, yeah, I'll take it. I was, I was just going to wait to talk to you guys about this, because I didn't, all the, all this, like, Curtis said, all the start work from Doug Rec. Coming up with a plan.
Or.
Um, no, there's nothing.
There's nothing up there.
Nope, they're just, they're starting to come in. We could get the Rose Icon catch, I will just say that, you'll just see a lot of pictures. The weather stays nice. It's, it's nice time of the year, and all those kids get down in the pumpkin patch. Is there anything that the building principals would like to speak to in regards to the field trips? It says no, all right.
So how about adoption of consent of the agenda? So how about adoption of, consensus agenda?
You know, the, 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 the school board, the representative, who we consider to have to present.
I'll second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. About action items. Second reading.
Would you timeline change on policies like this to an I?
That was just an error, yeah, that, that, we can just change that, I can make, we can make that change with your guys' approval. We'll just change the, the policy and the A R to match both twelve days. Other than that, those, the second reading, if you guys didn't see anything, I would encourage your approval for all those policy updates. And then that will also check the box for the personal electronic device. We have to have an adopted policy by the thirty-first, so we'll get that done tonight.
With the personal electronic devices, you ever talked about storage, storage business for those or anything? By purchasing anything for?
We, we have talked administratively about that, yeah, but we, the policy, we just kept it with, on their person room in a lock, in, in a, in a backpack. Locker, locked up, stored away.
I, I heard, I, I actually talked to other people about schools or what they were doing. It sounds like that was more like, kind of what they felt too, because the expense and the, it is sort of like worth with, to, to have something in the lab that would be a, storage for them if something happened.
Yeah.
I'd be curious if there are any special.
Yeah, I mean, so the guys are spending two hundred thousand dollars on storage, yeah, P D's for, so to, 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 yeah. We, we were, we talked about it a lot, they make a lot of things.
We're sharpening our pencil.
Yes, yeah, we are sharpening our pencils, that'll go over well here in about six months, I'm sure, that you guys purchase. But we actually got quotes, so, I mean, I think, you guys remember, I think our quotes were for the yonder pouches for just the high school and the D H S. It was close to forty thousand dollars.
And we were like, whoa.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
I'm with Gillis School Review Board Directors approve recommended O S B A policy update as presented.
Hey, we have a motion again, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. A unanimous motion. We're going to be project manager. We're going to build this school, renew American School Prize Grant. Uh, you know, that description?
Yeah, that'd be.
Project manager for the, for the Renew America School Grant Project at Billard Alternative High School. Energy updates, scope of service are attached over a five-year term. Amount not to exceed twenty-six thousand, three hundred and sixty-three dollars and sixty-three cents. And payable to unit, community system solutions and fully funded by the Renew America Social, or excuse me, America School Prize Grant. Oregon's Renew American Schools Prize Grant and separate from the Renew America School Federal.
Which we, oh, oh, I wanted to.
Okay. So we have a recommend motion.
So is this for, what are we using that for?
Energy update at all schools, that's the only call at all, I thought.
That's what I thought, I didn't know if we were putting in, I mean, systems or.
Right now, we're not so sure because that's what project manager.
Yeah. We're actually still waiting, so the second one, eleven C, we're still waiting for that Asher Level Two, which is the, they, they come out and they just assess. But where, where do we stand? So in the know, in the know, we're with the project managers to recommend, whether it's windows, or plumbing, or whatever it may be. I think we talked about lights over there.
Windows.
Windows.
And we have a, a match that we have to do with organ, department, energy, things. So that's a process. But we shouldn't talk to the, you know, our, you know.
So we're, we're trying to keep it at school for the long form.
I mean, I, yeah, I'm having a discussion, I will continue to have it.
It's not happening right now.
I mean, at this point, yeah.
They're offering to, to do that, you know, we, you know, now.
And, you know, Craig, you probably speak to this, but I mean, even the, the, what the Bill of Alternative is, you know, we've got fifty, sixty kids over there right now. If we can get some decent energy efficiency upgrades to that old building, it's not a bad spot. Shelby and his crew are down there, you know, so. We just want to like actually open that and like, yeah, whether you have storage things and things in the future, it's not a terrible idea.
Basically, just need a motion.
So I'll make a motion, I move the Winston-Dillard School Board of Directors to approve the project, excuse me, the project management for the D A H S energy update for a total amount not to exceed twenty-six thousand, three hundred and sixty-three dollars and sixty-three cents. And payable to community, the chief of the chief.
Yeah, a motion, a simple, all in favor? Aye.
So this, we're just, we're just waiting.
No, we've got to do them. Yeah, we have to do all, okay.
So the eleven C is.
It's just Asher, yeah, Asher.
So it's New Deal Alternative High School Renew American School Grant. The description, provide, she, Americans, American, anybody of, of heating, refrigeration, and air conditioning engineers, professional services for the Renew America Schools Grant Project at Billard Alternative High School. Energy update, total amount not to exceed eleven thousand, fifty dollars and payable to R and W engineers, funded by the federal renewal or, or school grant. Motion.
I'm with the Gillis School Board Director, approve the Asher professional service to the D H, D A H S energy updates for the total amount not to exceed eleven thousand, fifty dollars and payable to R and W engineers.
I'm second to that motion.
Yeah, a motion in a second, all in favor? Aye.
Just, let me just recap that real quick. So the, the second, the C, Asher Level Two, that's an energy audit, so they come out and they look at the building and they do, they really assess whatever, whatever they need to. Asheray, those folks that's actually R and W engineers, they'll work closely with the project managers who are, help me out, Kim.
E C F or something?
C, C S S.
C F.
Community System Solution. So once the energy audit is, gets complete, they'll share what their recommendations are to the project manager. And then the actual monies that we'll spend to update whatever Asheray.
You'll see it.
Option, that will be coming down the pipe too, because we have more money to spend. So tonight was just for the energy audit and the money to secure the project manager for what will happen.
This is a grant that's been.
Yes.
It's now coming through.
Because of what's that roll out, like.
And you'll have to use more weight, because we're already, we've been running into, now with the, with the gun shutdown, they're already. Shows a little. Who knows, remind, someone might have just done an energy audit and got some project management funds for doing that thing.
Have anyone signed up to speak? We shall, so we'll move on to, before we get to the order. Um, I know that, Kyle would like to say something to the order.
Absolutely, so my apologies for not making it to last one for you. Angel eyes, talk to. But I, I'd like to recognize Don and Jan for working some program. Uh, this summer, we fed over seven thousand meals, uh, during the month of June, July, and August. That's a lot of being biggest month, which we said, close to seven thousand meals. So just a big thank you to her and the team for being out there, they were, worked, when it was really hot and we had, we made good spite of it. On Thursday, we had a pop school and, so, and a little thank you for, for her. Thank you, cheesy, today being the light for people in.
Well, can I just say that my grandkids went to the, you know, the bus and, and always a smile, you know, I know it wasn't always easy, lots of kids in line and eating and everything, but always a smile and always kindness. So it was awesome.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the building principals. Rob, you want to start?
Sure, so a lot of things going on at the middle school academically, getting our teacher teams put together. We're starting to see a lot of, a lot of good workaround interventions and supporting kids. And what's nice is one team is coming up with a solution that then can work for another team. So really sharing, sharing that, starting to get down to root cause on why kids are, are not doing well in school, and so that's exciting to see. Uh, in working with, with the students on changing, changing the culture, we've been leveraging our leadership group, they've got a slew of activities coming in. In fact, in that, they're starting to film their own P F A, on, you know, how, how we should behave. Our digital media class is also coming up with different posters and memes and pieces that can go into announcements. Some that are humorous, some that are serious, and really trying to put that, that constant message out there on how we should be interacting. And then our sports programs, I'll turn it to Shell, we've, we've had some, you know, some really good success, some tight losses, but.
Yeah, our volleyball team played tonight against Coolfield, very close game. Seventh grade lost two to one, and our eighth grade team won two to one. Right, um, our cross-country team went to Ford Pond today, I'm not sure how they did. Um, wait to hear from Mister Hunter. And then tomorrow night, our football team's gonna go down to South Upland High School and play against Coffee Berry under the lake.
Oh, what, what time, what time does that start?
It'll be starting at five thirty.
Sorry, does that start?
Yes.
All right, Emily?
The last couple of weeks, we last have been working, I'm looking at some writing data. So a couple of years ago, we adopted simple by writing for our writing curriculum. And they came up with new investments this year, so we've been looking at that data and looking at how it can influence what we're teaching in classrooms. So that's been some really exciting stuff. We had a wonderful community event, got a family dance. Their kiddos got to come and dance music in the gym, and pass the light steps, there were confessions running, there were raffles. And it was a lot of fun, from kindergarten all the way to fifth grade, everybody was out there dancing, it was a really great time. Coming up, we have the Halloween game that has to also sit on for us, everyone was dressed in costumes and skate around the gym to music. A really fun community event. We also have a lot of exciting learning going on in classrooms, so we've been talking a lot as a staff about engaging students and making sure that they're enjoying their time while they're at school, yes, we want them to learn, but we want them to love it, and we want them to want to be there and want to come back the next day. And so we've been working on a lot of engagement strategies, and we've had some great things going on. Our second grade had a sleepover party two days ago where they were celebrating their attendance, but they also brought in reading. And so they all got to turn the lights down and pretend like they were at a sleepover and read to each other, read to their stuffed animals, and it was a lot of fun. We also had a third grade, our third grade class was reading about murals and how they can affect communities and really boost morale in communities by just painting on walls. So they actually created their own mural in their classroom after they were done reading, and it's all about friendship and coming together. But again, it was very engaging. Our fourth grade classroom is having a room transformation tomorrow, so Miss Jordy spent hours after school today creating a tornado in one section of our classroom, creating a wildfire in another section of our classroom. And kiddos are gonna come in tomorrow and they get to explore all the different sections, and all day will be all about natural disasters. So this is another way that we're engaging kids. We also added something really exciting, um, looking glass, it's a gum ball machine. And you wouldn't think a gum ball machine was that exciting, but when gum is outlawed in your school and you bring in a gum ball machine, it really excites kiddos. And so one way that we are rewarding positive behavior is when kiddos get drawn for what's called a copying, basing, looking glass for being strong, accountable, friendly, or empathetic, they get a quarter and they get to try the gum ball machine. They also get a quarter and they get to give it to a friend who they've seen also be strong, empathetic, friendly, or accountable. And at first, we were afraid that they were just gonna give it to their buddies. But the other day, I had a first grader in there and I said, oh, you gave your extra quarter to so-and-so, and he goes, yeah, he's not even my friend, but he was really accountable. So they're really understanding and recognizing the reason each other, and that's really exciting.
Yeah.
Uh, we had our open house at the Evering, so to say, and Tom knows and has sent donated sixty large pizzas um, to feed our families. And so we had pizza, we put some salad, and they get, you know, their meal, and they have water and juice to choose from, and we've, um, we weren't sure, you know, about sixty pizzas, how many that, on the speed really, we had this idea, but you just never know. We had more than enough. So people were going up for seconds, we were able to give staff pizza and salad, some people to their families. We had Doug Rec in there, they set up a booth, um, they took home pizzas to their families, we had Cub Scouts in there. As well, they set up a meeting and got some information out to families. And then all, I think almost all of our teachers were there, maybe all of them, were at open house and families were going in and having the teachers in the classroom, and it was a really, really fun time, and surprises, and it was a good night for connection, and it's just really, um, so so grateful to be able to see our families that way, and very, very grateful, you know, and it was very trite for them. Was that, and high school, the high school, yes, they do. The high school made cookies and we served them too, so there were four high schools, um, who came. And that was, it was awful. Um, so a lot of people who, who were putting a lot of time and effort into our, into our open house, our events committee, and just, as, as the teachers and some of the staff that worked on making this night comfortable, and, and spent a lot of their own extra time, and feel that it was a fun night for our families. So really grateful for that. Uh, today, we had Dana Herbert who came back to visit at all the elementary schools. And so for those of you who don't know that, she works for Stand for Children, Oregon, so she's an early literacy coach, her principal, basically. And so she comes in, she walks through the classrooms with us, and, um, our, our literacy classrooms, and then provide feedback, talks with us about what we can do to help our teachers and, and help our students. So really, really good information, and I would say, today, I, we walked through the Dana and Ann's book, which is our instruction book, sure. And, and the conversations that we had about what's happening in our schools and, and what we can do, and how it is structured on so many levels of what I can do and how I can help teachers, was really, really awesome and, um, very motivating afterwards. Um, we also, at the Evering, just hired three new fed eyes, so we're very excited to welcome them to our D L C classrooms. Um, and then lastly, we also, teachers, our math teachers worked with Laura Nelson, who, um, who's a math consultant. Last year, we had Jen Hunt, and this year, we have Laura Nelson, her company is called Mathway, as well. And she observed teachers, she went into their classrooms for almost an entire block, and then she spent twenty minutes with each of them, um, everything, what she's yours, and then she's planning for the P D for them, that'll be based off of what she's on the classroom, based on me, so. Really, I just thought that too.
Ethan?
All right, um, it's October, and October.
All right, it's October, and October at a early elementary school is already a festival. We are definitely out of the honeymoon period and really letting our personalities shine at times. But there are some really, really great things that are going on and happening at Rockaway, we also have Dana today, and she was able to do a professional development session with my staff teachers around comprehension and engagement for Readaloud. And it was pretty quick, but we kind of got down and dirty, I felt like, and got through the information and applied it and gave teachers the tool to take back to the classrooms to use. And Readalouds are not a new thing that elementary teachers do, but we just added a little bit more details into it, so hopefully helps with that stream of engagement and comprehension. We had our second booster club meeting, so Rockaway hasn't had a booster club or a P T O for quite some time. And so we're really trying to get the word out that we wanna have that happen again, and we doubled our attendance from four to eight. But some really energetic moms that happens to be right now, that want to do some great things for our students in our school. Couple of things we talked about with also having a family dance later on. We are envious of McGovern's cheetah mascot, we would love our own version of a cheetah mascot at Rockaway. And we are also looking into adding to the Winston Community Safari metal animals that are around town, we would love to have our cheetah pet at Rockaway too. So those are some things that they are focusing on, we will also be having a trick or treat that they offer, helping to organize. It is, it is. We are, what else do they can share? Well, I just have to be, I'm gonna let Ty grow, so I'll have it up.
Well, Nora always takes everything from me, but she did leave me one thing tonight, with some, I'm grateful for Shee, she forgot to mention our boys soccer team. So I'm gonna shut, shine the light on Kyle with his new hat and digs over here, and he's working really hard, he showed up with a New York Yankees hat on. So we have to obviously direct him to the Trojan Way with his new hat and shirt over here, so, but he is working really hard, the boys soccer team is, and we appreciate, we appreciate him working hard, so I didn't want to do it. Please him out, and say we're talking about all the sports up there.
You're working now.
And four over. So, anyone else? Robert, do you have anything? Okay, all right. Well.
Alan, bye.
Yeah?
Hey, do you from the city? You don't know. Okay.
That could just be staying out here right.
All right, we're, sure. Uh, filming our regular session at West, West School District Public Program on November fourth, twenty-five.